Let's go ahead and start this bidding and call this bidding to order. And we'll start with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by our city manager.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Barreto, please. Heavenly Father, we pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us assurance of what would... Please, give us assurance of what we would like to see in this city and that we all live together in harmony, Lord, for the betterment of the city of Mission. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We have a report from the Mission chamber.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We have celebrated several ribbon cuttings over the past few weeks. We cut ribbons for Rotama, Human Capital, Mary's Bookkeeping and Tax Services, Bellegarde Vintage Treasures, and South Texas Packing Ship. Thank you, Mayor, for attending majority of those. We really appreciate it. We also held our quarterly new member orientation with a great turnout of our new members. The goal is to help new members understand their full value of being a Chamber member. On January 31st, we held our first Food for Thought Educational Workshop at the Seed Building. The purpose was to educate business owners on various Facebook marketing strategies. Thank you, Mr. Plata, who's not here today, for being there at the workshop with us. This past Saturday, we hosted our annual Mega Winter Texan Fiesta at the Leo Peña Placita Park from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There were musical entertainers, numerous booths, and we gave away over 3,000 barbecue sandwiches and Mission T-shirts. It was a great time for everybody. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the department reports. We have them in your packet. If there's any changes or delictions, don't hesitate to ask. If not, we'd like to have a motion to...
Mayor, I don't have any questions, and I would like to put in the form of a motion to accept the departmental reports as presented in writing.
Motion? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens' participation, if anybody from the audience would like to address the council? I'd like to... Bibi and...
Bill? They're back there.
Yes.
They are.
I'd like to give you all the thanks for all the support and the good work that you all did for the Citrus Fiesta. You know that those... That could not be done without you two guys. And it from the... From on behalf of the City Council and the citizens' submission, we want to thank you. Can you all stand up so they can see who you guys are? Next item, we'll go on to our public hearings. Mr. Acevedo?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of 8.5 acres of land out of Lot 202, John H. Cherry subdivision. It's currently Zone C1 and AOI to propose as R3 zoning. The applicant's housing group and the adoption of an ordinance is inclined if the Mayor and councils approve. On January 25th, 2017, the Plan and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located near the southeast corner of Business Highway 83 and San Antonio Street. There was some concerns voiced regarding the drainage in that area. The board unanimously recommended approval of R3. The... This is in a regular lot, measures total about 8.5 acres. The... If approved, the land will be needed to be subdivided prior to any construction. So, the land use reflects zoning shown above in the future land use map, reflects a general commercial on the northern half and modern density residential, the land use on the southern half. The staff at this time is recommending approval of the rezoning. This is a public hearing, and this item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'd like to go ahead and recommend that we go ahead and approve the rezoning, also adopt ordinance 4454.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item B?
Thank you. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of Lot 9, Glenwood subdivision. It's for R1 to C3. The applicant is Carlos S. Lulo, and it does require an adoption of the ordinance, as the councils incline. On February 8th, 2017, the Plan and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this zoning request. The property is located near the southeast corner of Helen Avenue and East Griffin Parkway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously approved for a C3 zoning, and this is... This site measures approximately 118 by 170.11, which equates about 20,073 square feet. The review comments, staff does not object to the proposed rezoning due to following its proposed C3 request. It is directly consistent to the future land use map. The C3 request is consistent with the surrounding land uses. The property has frontage along the Griffin Parkway and its primary access makes it for commercial use. So, at this time, staff recommends approval, and this item's now before you. It is a public hearing.
Anybody that is in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and rezon and adopt ordinance 4455.
I move that we adopt ordinance 4455, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C?
1.1C is a public hearing of conditional use permit for the complimentary offering of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption for social and cultural events. It's located at 921 East 12th Street, Lot 1, Mission Library subdivision. It's currently Zone R2. Upper Valley Art League is the applicant, care of Maxi Lu Link, and it does require an adoption of an ordinance, as the councils incline. On January 25th, 2017, the Plan and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. This site is located on the northeast corner of Kika, Lagarsa, and 12th Street, and there was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for three years. Staff recommendation is approval for three years as well. This is a public hearing. This item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit and also adopt ordinance 4456.
I move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D?
Yes, item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit of sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Clarion Inn and Suites. Address, location is 3700 Plantation Grove Boulevard, Lot 2, Sherland Plantation Grove Hotel Bungalow subdivision. The Clarion Inn and Suites is the applicant, and it is adoption of an ordinance, as the councils incline. On January 25th, 2017, the Plan and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. The subject site is located on the southwest corner on the Plantation Grove Boulevard in Santa Lorena. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval, and they currently hold a standard IRS TABC permit. Staff recommendation is approval, subject to the CUP is valid from now until September 6, 2018, at which their TABC license expires. No objection to the waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement from Las Misiones apartments and must continue to comply with all building fire and health codes. This is a public hearing. This item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit and also adopt ordinance 4457.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item E?
Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit of installation of a 130-foot wireless communication facility with associated ground equipment in an enclosed 50-by-50 leased area at 201-A South Mayberry Road. A tract of land containing 1.9 acres of Lot 17-9, west addition to Sherland subdivision. It's public to equal side T-Mobile is the applicant, and it does require an adoption of an ordinance. On January 25th, 2017, the Plan and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located 300-foot north of US Expressway 83 along the west side of Mayberry Road. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommending approval for life of use, subject to must install an eight-foot opaque fence around the leased area, must allow for co-locations by others, and a CUP shall not be transferred to others. This is a public hearing. This item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit and adopt ordinance 4458.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item F?
Yes, item 1.1F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to keep a portable building for an auto sales office use located at 1418 East Business Highway 83, Lot 1, Lemon Tree subdivision. Currently Zone C3. The applicant is J. Sanchez Motors, and it does require an adoption of an ordinance, as the councils incline. On February 8th, 2017, the Plan and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located at the southwest corner of Lemon Tree and Business Highway 83. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommendation is approval, subject to a one-year approval to assess this new business installing and maintaining shrubs along Business Highway 83 and a portable building to be skirted, the acquisition of a business license for this new operation. This is a public hearing. This item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit and also adopt ordinance 4459.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have this position, the minutes that we had for the City Council on January 23rd of 2017, and a special City Council meeting that we had on January 27th of 2017, and February 6th of 2017. We do need a motion to approve the minutes for those days.
I move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge some of the minutes that we had from our boards, and one of them is the Juvenile Justice and Liquacy Prevention Advisory Board on October 19th of 2016, the Boys and Girls Club on November 16th of 2016, and December 15th of 2016. The Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone had a meeting on December 8th of 2016. We also had Mission Redevelopment Authority on December 8th of 2016, and the Zone Board of Adjustments had a meeting on December 14th of 2016, and our Planning and Zoning Commission had a meeting on January 11th of 2017. We do have to acknowledge the minutes that we had from our board members. We do need a motion to approve or acknowledge the minutes.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to acknowledge the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. We do have the approval of some items. First one is the preliminary plat and final plat approval for Usbatos subdivision number 17 and 20.
On this one, Mayor, item 4.1, we're going to ask the Mayor and the Council, we can please take no action on this item, as we need to go with the developer one more time.
Okay. We do need to table this item?
Rather, take no action.
Or take no action on this item. We go on to item 4.2.
Yes, item 4.2 is a preliminary plat approval of Las Comadas number four subdivision, a re-subdivision of 30.01 acres, being all of Lot 8, 9, and 10, Block 1, Texas Garden subdivision. The developers, Calicha Products, Inc., and the engineers, Melton and Hunt. On January 25th, 2017, the City Council held a public hearing to consider preliminary plat approval for Las Comadas number four subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located along the east side of Western Road between Mile 3 Road and Mile 4 Road. The City Council unanimously recommended approval as per staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is the approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, meeting any comments from the county planning department. And this is a... The developers proposing 50 single-family residential lots, all exceeding the area required. The staff recommendation is approval of this item.
Do need a motion to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat that's submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.3 is the authorization to award bids for the purchase of cold water meters for the Public Works Department.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor. Item 4.3 is the authorization to award bid for the purchase of cold water meters for the Public Works Department. On December 19, 2016, the City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for cold water meters for the Public Works Department. The City of Mission has accepted and opened three bid responses for cold water meters. Staff recommends awarding to ACT Pipe and Supply, who is the lowest responsible bidder admitting all specification. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year term base. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to ACT Pipe and Supply.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.4?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 4.4 is the authorization to solicit bids for the overlay improvement project at various locations throughout the City of Mission. Overlay improvement project includes asphalt payment overlay, utility adjustments, and replacement of damaged concrete curb and gutter. Streets for this project include Colinas Del Rio subdivision, which is in the vicinity of 2.5 Mile and Inspiration Road, Los Sevanos Road, US 83 to 1 mile south, Mayberry Road, FM 495 to Mile 2 Road, and Fairway Street, Bryant to Highland Park. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids for this overlay project.
They're going from 2.5 north?
Yes, from 495 to 2 Mile Line on Mayberry Road. On that project, we're working with the county mayor on that...
We haven't done that yet?
No, this is just the overlay project that we do on a yearly basis, and we're working with the county to work on an interlocal agreement for also the overlay of various streets north of Mile 2 Road.
Do you think it's going to happen, or...
We submitted the information, and we're pending a response from them, but hopefully it'll...
Hopefully, we can do that.
Bless you.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation of the overlay?
I move to approve.
Second, Mayor.
A motion and a second to approve the authorization to solicit bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, just real quick, how far north on 2 Mile are you?
To the... The project that we're working with the county, that's to the city limit. Because right now, the county is working with various cities, with the city of Pompers, and they're working from 3 Mile Line south to the city limit. So, we want to continue that project with them through an interlocal agreement with the county of the...
But the one we just approved is to the 2 Mile Line.
Just to the 2 Mile Line?
Yes.
Then we're trying to see if the county can overlay it for us?
Between 2 and 2.5?
To the city limits.
To the city limits.
Because Pompers is coming...
Yeah, south.
We just want to meet together.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good plan, Mayor.
4.5, Ms. Carillo?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 4.5 is the authorization to award bid for the purchase of media connect supplies for the Public Works Department. On December 19, 2016, the City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for media connect supplies for the Public Works Department. The City of Mission has accepted and opened two bid responses for media connect supplies. Staff recommends awarding to HD Supply Water Works, who is the lowest responsible bidder admitting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to HD Supply Water Works.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to award the bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.6?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 4.6 is the authorization to award bid for the purchase of water line maintenance supplies for the Public Works Department. The City of Mission has accepted and opened two bid responses for the water line maintenance supplies. Staff recommends awarding to ACT Pipe and Supply, who is the lowest responsible bidder admitting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. Again, a staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to ACT Pipe and Supply.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation and to award the bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.7, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Item 4.7 is approval of resolution. It would be 1492 in support of the proposed Mission Twin Oaks LP. Mayor, Council, Twin Oaks has proposed to develop 104 units or less for affordable rental housing. This is located within the City of Mission. This is the resolution on item 1.1A. That was just rezoned to the R3, and a letter has been sent to the Mayor and the Council. And if a complete application is presented to TDHCA, TDHCA will send another letter to the Mayor and the Council on that. So, this would be approval of resolution 1492 in support of these proposed units.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1492. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.8, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request by Sherland Independent School District for the use of the Boys and Girls Club Gym at Banworth Park for early voting on Election Day for the Board of Trustees election of May the 6th of 2017. This request, sir, has already been approved by their board, and now they're asking us. Early voting would be from April 24th through May the 2nd, and Election Day would be on May the 6th, and so this would be for the 2017 school board trustee election.
I move for approval. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Against, motion carries. 4.9?
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. On item 4.9, we're requesting authorization to solicit proposals for civil service promotion exams. We had never done this before, but during the audit process, our promotional exams was flagged as far as we're using more than $10,000. We had never done that. We had always said it was a sole-source vendor. They've been with us since we started civil service in 2001. But to avoid any problems and to make sure that we're following the procurement process, Mr. Garza in legal counsel advised it is better for us to go out for bids. So, at this time, we are requesting authorization to solicit bids for the civil service promotion exams.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to authorize and solicit bids for the civil service promotion exam. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. On item 4.10, Mayor, we're requesting approval of professional service contract for Mark Sassi. At this time of the year, his contract expires today, so we are requesting approval to renew his contract. I know he was stuck in traffic. I don't know... Oh, he's here. Mr. Sassi's here. You have any questions? Mr. Sassi's been with us since, also since the inception of civil service. Both chiefs, I think, highly recommend him. I think Mr. Garza recommends him. At this time, we'd like to approve his contract, and of course, it's for civil service and for any other items that the city manager or city council request. So, at this time, we are requesting approval of the professional service contract with Mark Sassi.
Do you motion to go ahead and approve the professional service contract?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. For the Devon, Mr. Guzman?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. On item 4.11, we're seeking to authorization to solicit bids to replace four drive-throughs outside units and four units inside for tellers.
We need a motion to approve the solicitor bids for to replace four drive-throughs?
Yes, sir.
Best of units?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution in support of the submission of a grant application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division for the Mission Police Department First Offender Program. The grant will allow for the implementation of the First Offender Program that is designed to assist children between the ages of 10 and 16 years of age who have been detained by the police department and charged with an offense for the first time. The program is designed to mentor the children and provide them a second opportunity to succeed in life. After successful completion of the program, the first offense report records will be destroyed. The total amount of the grant request is $60,000. There is no cash message as required by the City of Mission. Staff is requesting a favorable recommendation for the purpose of submitting the grant application to the Office of the Governor.
Is this 1493 resolution?
Yes, sir.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1493 in support of the submission of the grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 413?
Mayor, City Council, the City of Mission Police Department received a request for approval of an ordinance providing for no parking on the east and the west side of the 2200 block of Creek Run Road at any time. The Mission Police Department had received several complaints in regards to vehicles parking on this block as patrons of businesses in the area along the roadway instead of utilizing the parking spaces provided in front of the establishments. The parking of vehicles along the roadway is creating a traffic hazard as vehicles are trying to travel north and south on Creek Run Road. With cars parked on both sides, there's only room for one vehicle at a time to travel either north or south. On February 6th, 2017, the Traffic Safety Committee met and approved the request for the no parking on the east side and the west side of the 2200 block of Creek Run Road as stated above. It is a recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee to adopt this ordinance. It is a recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee to adopt this ordinance. The request is being forwarded to you for your review. Just so you have an understanding, sir, this is Creek Run Road is the one next to Rosie's Restaurant off of FM 495 Griffin Parkway between Glasscock and Sheraland Road. We've had a lot of complaints in that particular block. All the residents there at Summerbury subdivision trying to come in and out of the subdivision, and therefore, this request is being solicited.
Okay. That's ordinance 4460?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion to approve ordinance 4460?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Benson? Item 414?
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council. Item 4.14 is approval of work authorization number 8 with Javier Arjana Hosa Engineering related to Mission Tennis Court at Birdwell Park. Nature of this request is work authorization number 8 entails a survey, engineering plans, specifications, and estimate for the construction for Mission Tennis Center at Birdwell Park. At this time, staff recommendation is for the approval of work authorization number 8.
I move for approval. Second.
The amount of this services is $115,142.
We do need, we have.
A motion.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the work authorization with Javier Arjana Hosa on the tennis courts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council. Item 4.15, authorization to award bid for new gym floor located on south side of the Boys and Girls Club main unit. City council authorized staff to solicit bids for the purchase and installation of a new gym floor at the main unit. The city of Mission accepted an open two-bid responses. Staff recommending awarding to Austin Courts and Floors, Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder, admitting all specification for a total of $52,400. The city will be paying $21,000 of the cost. $31,400 will be paid from the Boys and Girls Club 501-C3. This item is before you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I shall move.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to authorize and award the bid for the new floor. What much for the bid for?
The total, Mayor, is going to be $52,400. $52,400.
$52,400. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have item 416. Ms. Bella?
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. Item 416 is for the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending December 31st, 2016, and interest earned for three months ending December 31st, 2016. Acceptance of this report is required by the Public Funds Investment Act, Section 2256.023 of the Texas Government Code. For this quarter, the total increases to investment balances were $6,652,060 and total decreases were $500,000, leaving a total of $21,507,947.35 in outstanding investments for the quarter. The total interest earned on all funds earned year-to-date is $30,928.83. This item is now before you.
I move for approval as presented.
Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the quarterly report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 417, Ms. Bella?
Item 417 is the approval of the attached budget amendment. This amendment is in the Designated Purpose Fund, and it is to allocate grant funds of $500,000 in both revenues and expenses. Grant funds were accepted by council on February 6th, 2017, and were awarded by the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. They will be used for the city of Mission Tennis Center at Birdwell Park.
Do need a motion to go ahead and approve?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
The budget amendment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
418?
Mayor and council, item 4.18 is the approval to surplus a patriotic statue and convey to the city of Hidalgo. The city of Mission received a request from the city of Hidalgo requesting the conveyance of a patriotic statue to be featured at the 2017 Border Fest activities. It's celebrating the USA and its heroes. The city of Hidalgo will be responsible for refurbishing this statue, this patriotic statue.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and approve the surplus and the donation?
I'm to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. 419?
Mayor and council, 419 is the approval to surplus a desktop computer and monitor and convey to Upper Valley Art League. The request has come from the Upper Valley Art League for this particular device, the desktop computer and monitor, and we are requesting authorization to go ahead and surplus and convey to the Upper Valley Art League.
Need a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the surplus and to go ahead and convey to the Upper Valley Arts League. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 420? Ms. Salinas?
Mr. Mayor and council, on this particular item, I would ask that the council go into executive session to discuss some of the terms of the contract.
On this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, I move we go into executive session.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Do you need a motion to reconvene?
Second.
A motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Should we go back to item 420?
Yes, sir, Mayor, city council members. Item 4.20 is the authorization for the mayor to execute water operational agreement, water delivery contract, and permanent water supply contract with United Irrigation District. The city of Mission has had an established relationship with United Irrigation District for the delivery of municipal water since 1981. The execution of those contracts will revise the previous agreements to reflect the accurate acreage of municipal water that the city currently utilizes and further amends by removing the attorney's fees and capital charge provisions from the agreements. Again, a staff recommendation is authorization for the mayor to execute water operational agreement, water delivery contract, and permanent water supply contract.
Do you need a motion to go ahead and not write, Mayor?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to? Do you have any comments?
Mayor, I just want to publicly thank all the staff and the departments who participated in the Texas Citrus Parade and all the events through the three-day weekend. I know we had runs with athletes. We had about 16 sister cities who also participated on the mayor's brunching. We also had numerous participants in the parade, and so I know that it takes a lot of work and dedication from all the staff, from all the departments to get this weekend prepared for the city and for the residents and the people who visit the city of Mission. So I want to thank them for that, and we're hoping to see even a better year next year. That's all I have, sir.
Need a motion to go ahead and adjourn?
Second.